Welcome to this forum for candidates for Scranton City Council Democratic Primary, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service at the University of Scranton and the Political Science Department, the University of Scranton. We also thank Toyota of Scranton for their financial support for today's forum. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, which means we do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to promote participation by informed citizens in their government. My name is Diana Dekey, currently President of the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. We are an organization of men and women of voting age. I encourage our viewers to join the League of Women Voters, which you can do on our website, L W V Lackawanna dot org. Membership connects you with three levels of the League: county, state, and national. Please be aware that it is our policy that no person, candidate, or political group is allowed to make an excerpt or edit today's forum recording. Campaigns may post a link to the forum where voters may view it in its entirety. Professor Jean Harris will serve as moderator for today's forum. She is Professor Political Science and Associate Faculty Women's and Gender Studies at the University of Scranton, where she is also Coordinator, Ready to Run Northeastern Pennsylvania. Thank you for watching, and I will turn the forum over to Jean. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you, Diana, and thank running for a Scranton Council. I'm sorry, my microphone's going on and off. And so Scranton City Council, there, we have four candidates with us today, and I will introduce them in a second. What we will be doing is asking all the candidates the same questions. None of them have seen the questions ahead of time, so these are questions prepared by the League of Women Voters and our members. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each of the questions, and we will end with a, each candidate having two minutes for a closing statement. We did a drawing to see who, which candidate would answer the first question first. And so let me first introduce our candidates in alphabetical order. So we have Kyle Donahue with us today, Bill King, Heather Marcone, and Tom Schuster. And for the first question, we will have Heather answer the first question, and then we'll go kind of in a round robin order in alphabetical order. So with no further ado, we will begin with the first question. And first, I just want a little bit of information from the Home Rule Charter. The Home Rule Charter of Scranton states that the mayor and the council jointly share, shall be the governing body of Scranton City Government. All powers and duties of the city government, which are legislative in nature, shall be exercised and performed by council. And in the event the nature of any power or duty is uncertain, or the law creating such power or duty requires cooperation between the branches of the city government, the President of Council and the mayor shall fix the responsibility of the exercise of such power or the performance of such duty. So just a little bit in terms of what the legal responsibility is for council members. So Heather, the first question this morning. The gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on Scranton City Council is that it will be a difficult and time-consuming part-time job. What knowledge, skills, and abilities can you bring to the job that will make you a successful council member?
Thank you. I am very good at multitasking. I actually practice clinically as a certified nurse midwife and also teach part-time at the Guy's Narrows School of Medicine. I've always been involved in various aspects of any community that I've lived in. You know, so I feel like it's important as a community member to engage in civic processes and helping out in the community. So, you know, I feel like I have skill in that area and used to juggling a lot of things and, you know, very, very socially active. So I feel like I have my finger on the pulse of lots of different, you know, community members and families, both that I serve as a nurse midwife, but also just, you know, from getting to know my community. I'm very compassionate about, you know, fixing healthcare disparities, but also disparities, you know, in greater parts of day-to-day life. So I think that this would really fit, you know, my sort of goals for, you know, as a person in a professional community.
Thank you. And now the same question to Tom. The gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on Scranton City Council is that it will be difficult, a difficult and time-consuming part-time job. So what knowledge, skills, and abilities can you bring to the job that will make you a successful council member?
How are you? So I first like to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for having this forum today. Looking at some of the qualities that might help me to be a good councilman would be, I think my education, I graduated from Bishop Ann High School. I then went on to Penn State University, I have a bachelor's degree in psychology and business, and then a master's degree in behavioral analysis. After college, I've spent some time in city government. I spent a year on the City Planning Commission. And then after election, I went on to the Scranton School Board. I would say that the Scranton School Board has prepared me for the, has given me the skill set I would need to navigate this system. I feel all the dealings with the school district, being able to weed through and navigate the, all the dynamics that play in there in my four years on there to be able to filter through the truth and get to the bottom of an issue, question all sides, look through bidding processes and contracts, and also having integrity and professional courage to go against maybe a majority if that were the case with an issue, to have this back and forth, I would say, to vet out all possible blind spots with a resolution or an issue.
Thank you. Same question now to Kyle.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. Every year, they also provide, they always provide this essential public service. Having been, Jean, you're exactly correct. It is a difficult and time-consuming job. Having been on council for the past three years, you know, a lot of people think that it's just our meetings one day a week, and then that's it. But then you have neighborhood meetings, you have calls, you have calls with department heads, calls with neighbors. I think the two biggest qualities, best qualities that I have in terms of what I bring to city council first is empathy, is being able to put yourself in someone else's shoes, understand their issue, understand what they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. But then it's also honesty, because at the end of the day, you can't always fix everybody's issue. So I think it's important to be honest with them upfront. And I think, you know, over the course of the last three years on council and also on my two years on the school board, I think, you know, that's what I've tried to done is, tried to do is just be honest with what's going on, whether it's good news or bad news, and then just move on from there and make educated decisions.
Thank you, Kyle. And the fourth candidate we have with us today, Bill King, the same question to you. The gritty reality of being hired by the voters to serve on Scranton City Council is that it will be a difficult and time-consuming part-time job. What knowledge, skills, and abilities can you bring to the job that will make you a successful council member?
Thank you, Jean. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning with the League of Women Voters, and I thank you for putting on this forum. I believe that I'm uniquely qualified to serve on this Scranton City Council. I graduated from Scranton Central High School, then went on and got a bachelor's degree in industrial arts education from Millersville University. I got my master's degree in secondary school administration at the University of Scranton, and then I went on to get my superintendent's letter of eligibility at Temple University. I spent 28 years serving the students and children of the Scranton School District, starting as a teacher and pretty much holding every position up until the superintendent of schools. While the superintendent of schools, at the time, we had $125 million budget, and I oversaw that. In fact, during my time as superintendent, we built three new elementary schools. John Woodyer, we tore down and rebuilt Woodyer Elementary, it's brand new. Kennedy, we added an addition there and renovated the rest of the building, so it's basically brand new. And the Isaac Strip on 14 acres over in West Scranton. I also have gone on to serve as superintendent of Lakeland School District, which had a $25 million budget. I'm the founder, race director, and president of the Steamtown Marathon, which has raised $2 million for St. Joseph's Center and had an economic impact of over $20 million on our region. I'm also serving the City Planning Commission. I'm president of the Shamrock Heart Foundation, where we put flowers out to all of the nursing homes and to the, all of the hospitals in the region. Along with the United Way, I've served on that board, and I feel as though I have the skills, as the empathy and the communication skills to be able to serve on this council ethically and honorably.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you. And so now we'll go to the second question, and Tom will answer this question first, and this relates to health emergencies. So Tom, what would you, what steps would you take as a council member to make Scranton better prepared for health emergencies, such as the COVID-19 pandemic, in the future? So what steps would you take to better prepare the city in the, for the future?
You know, I don't know if anybody foresaw this pandemic coming, and I think at this point in time, the city has been navigating through it. So I think some of the steps that may come into the future, maybe already in place. I know my place of work, we went on from March 13th until about July, July 1st. We put steps in place to make sure that we could be virtually and go remote. And I think those channels are there, like the groundwork is laid for that. And I think if it were to ever happen again, that could be utilized when it comes to, you know, dispersing of, I mean, with this pandemic, we're talking about dispersing vaccines and things like that. So I think also the same could be said with that, where, you know, stations could be set up, and some of the groundwork might be laid. I think one of the things I was trying to focus on during the pandemic, because I have been on council during the pandemic, was making sure that we're not overspending on things because of a hype. I know, you know, cities like New York City have spent a lot of money. I know there were two centers set up for about $20 million apiece, which saw very few patients. So I think with some things like that in mind, I was keeping that in mind so that the city of Scranton didn't overspend, didn't overshoot for things that were unnecessary and try to get the reality of the situation while still, while still taking care of what needed to be done. So I think that I would do the same thing moving forward.
Thank you, Tom. Kyle, the same question to you. What steps would you take as a council member to make Scranton better prepared for health emergencies, such as the COVID pandemic, in the future?
So moving forward, you know, there's only so much oversight role council has on this, but I think one of the things we could concentrate on is some sort of a health department, but I don't believe that that should be done on a city level. I think we're too small. I think it needs to be done on the county level or even a regional level to really, you know, get the full incorporation and really be effective in creating a health department. I think, you know, our borders, you know, we have so many borders where, you know, you throw a ball over your back fence, and, you know, you're in Music or you're in Dunmore. So I think we all are interconnected. And I think that that needs to be a way we look at things moving forward, just in general, not only talking about health, but a more regional approach to some of these issues. But from a city perspective, too, I think it's important, and we did a good job of doing this over the last year, is making sure those essential services are taken care of and are ready to perform their functions. I'm talking about, you know, making sure the police, there's enough cops on the street to, you know, respond to any emergencies. There's enough firefighters and firehouses to respond to emergencies. Your garbage gets, is getting picked up every week. And I think that's what we really need to concentrate on, is making sure that those essential services could, you know, are able to continue.
Thank you, Kyle. Same question to you, Bill.
Okay. I was the superintendent of the Lakeland School District when this pandemic recently hit, and we started coordinating. I learned one thing really quickly. We all needed to communicate really quickly. So we coordinated through the NEIU 19 with all the superintendents in our whole region. And it was great to be able to, I learned from that. Communication is key. I'm a big believer that proper planning prevents poor performance. So I believe that we, as a city, should cooperate and collaborate with whoever the mayor is at the time to try to develop an emergency response plan and look at every possible emergency that could happen, from, you know, a hurricane to a pandemic or whatever could come down our way, and really develop a detailed emergency plan so that we have actions that would take place in the event that a pandemic or a hurricane or a flood, or whatever the emergency might be. I believe that we could probably work to develop that. I do agree with Councilman Donahue that having a local health department would be extremely helpful. We were, there were other parts of the state at the time when the pandemic hit that, like Montgomery County, had their own health department. And we, as superintendents, were looking toward a local health department, and one didn't exist. I did communicate with Lackawanna County. I think that's a great suggestion. So once again, I think when you collaborate, cooperate, communicate, and plan properly, we can be prepared for these things in the future.
Thank you, Bill. And so Heather, the question. What steps would you take as a council member to make Scranton better prepared for health emergencies in the future?
Thanks. You know, aside from the pandemic, I think just in general, the big moves of corporate healthcare can kind of, you know, limited access for the most vulnerable, especially residents of a community. And as a nurse and a nurse midwife, I really feel strongly about public health matters. And I think, you know, that's something we need every day, not, you know, of course, the focus right now is on the COVID pandemic. But, you know, we need to help community members with already existing healthcare disparities and things that are modifiable. And, you know, while maybe we can't, like Kyle said, support an entire public health department just in the city, I 100% support Mayor Cagnetti's proposal for the public health coordinator. I think, you know, that was a good idea, you know, we have so many surrounding communities. Maybe we all need our own public health coordinator, because it'd be a very, very big job. You know, we have a lot of residents in our city and a lot of issues. But the person, you know, in addition to, like, disaster mitigation and planning, things like disseminating the vaccines, you know, for COVID and, you know, all of that, we could use help, you know, working with community organizations to help promote, you know, health and wellness and track key data within our city for, you know, disease processes like heart disease and cancers and things like that. You know, so I think it would be a very important job to fully fund, maybe work collaboratively with the surrounding communities to have regional meetings about, you know, health issues in the communities.
Thank you, Heather. So the third question, we'll start with Kyle. And the question is, given the interest at the federal level of government to fix the nation's aging infrastructure, what areas of infrastructure in the city of Scranton are in the most dire need of remediation? And what steps will you take to secure and allocate funding to those areas?
So it's roads and bridges, I think, is right from the, right from the get-go. That's what we need to concentrate on in terms of infrastructure. Also stormwater, but I think that's a, that's a different approach, and I also think that needs to be a regional approach. But in terms of roads and bridges, we have, you know, we have an agreement with PennDOT right now, where we're moving through replacing some bridges. It's not going as fast as we would like, but that's just the nature of government bureaucracy. But I think the, you know, the idea of a federal infrastructure plan brings a lot of opportunity in. We have bridges in the city where you don't even know there are bridges. I know one of them that's on the list to be repaired, and North Main Avenue will be closed down for a couple, a couple months coming up is over by the car wash and Pepsi-Cola plant there. There's actually a bridge that comes under North Main Avenue. And there's bridges like that all over the city, where you don't even know there's a bridge. So it's not, not even the fact that, you know, you see these bridges, but there's ones you don't see that we still need to fix. And in terms of roads, we all need, we all know we need to be, you know, we need better roads in the city of Scranton. But I think, you know, we need to do our part on the local level in terms of making sure we're policing paved cuts the right way, make sure we're policing the utility companies the right way. I know there's, there has been an effort over the last few years and try, you know, the water company's been a lot better than the gas company, but too many times, you know, we'll pave a road, then the gas company will come in and tear it up a year later. Or the water company will do work, they'll pave a road, the gas company comes. And that, we need to really get that under control at a local level.
Thank you, Kyle. The question now to Bill. Given the interest at the federal level of government to fix the nation's aging infrastructure, what areas of infrastructure in the city are in most dire need of remediation? And what steps will you take to secure and allocate funding to those areas?
You know, I think that Kyle hit right on it, the, obviously, the bridges and roads. There are some roads in this city which are absolutely atrocious. To drive them, you have to go two miles an hour because of the paddles. And I understand, you know, we're in northeastern Pennsylvania, expansion, contraction, we have rough winters. That has an impact on Blacktop and, you know, in our region. But I really think we need to take an aggressive role and actually develop a plan, utilizing this federal funding in a wise way so that it can be spread out, and we can target areas, and even develop a plan that identifies the worst areas, the worst roads, and then plots out over, over anywhere from a two- to five-year period where we're going to budget some of that funding to be able to get those particular, the worst roads first and bridges. I also think that our parks, the infrastructure in our parks, need to be addressed. You know, Neyon Park alone, I spent a lot of time as a child up there at Neyon Park swimming, and now I walk up there probably a couple days a week. And it's amazing that this pandemic brought a lot of people out to our parks. And the emphasis is really important now that we take care of our city parks, because we want this to be a great place for us to live. So we need to use that funding wisely and make sure that it's going to have a lasting impact. But that's where I see the most important part, to try to address the infrastructure in our city.
Thank you, Bill. Heather, the question to you. Given the interest at the federal level of government in fixing the nation's aging infrastructure, what areas of infrastructure here in the city of Scranton are in most dire need for remediation? And what steps will you take to secure and allocate funding to those areas?
You know, I agree with, you know, that who's spoken before me, that obviously the roads and bridges are a major factor. That's one of the things that I talked about when I talked to and, you know, and I understand that last year was a particularly challenging time for getting some of that work done because of the pandemic. But obviously, some of the roads are in super poor shape, which puts, you know, everybody at risk for safety and for, you know, loss of personal property and things like that, that is hard to hold somebody accountable for. So, you know, having something like Bill said, you know, a two- to five-year plan, maybe for repaving all of Scranton, focusing on, you know, the worst areas first would be good. I also have been very surprised after moving here about the issues with infrastructure and the water and sewer. Like, I personally, where I live in, it's a newer neighborhood, so I'm sure that other people have had more of an impact, have woken up to zero water many, many times, you know, just in the three years that I've lived here. You know, it just affected everybody's ability to go on with their days and everything. You know, so, and the working at the hospital, of course, more toward downtown, there was a lot of issues that we've had with water there, which is, you know, all the health and safety issue, but also just kind of embarrassing. You know, so I think that, you know, while the city is not in retention of the control of, like, water and sewer and things like that, that we should have a better collaborative, you know, arrangement. And like Kyle said, you know, not duplicating or undoing each other's work, you know, because that's not really accomplishing anything. So holding them accountable, if they're going to have our contracted services now under their control for providing what they need to provide to the residents. I also agree with Bill in that the parks, the attention, that's something that people are, you know, feel very strongly about. Some of the reason that we all love this area is, you know, the beauty of it and being able to enjoy that, particularly when a lot of our, like, social outlets and, you know, means for exercise and things like that were sort of interrupted and taken away, so.
Thank you, Heather. And Tom, the question to you about infrastructure. What do you see as the biggest areas of need in the Scranton area? And what would you do to take, to secure the funding?
So yeah, of course, roads and bridges. I mean, these projects are being started right now, the bridge near Alpha Street on Main Avenue, Parker Street, and Elm, and there's other bridges on that list. And there are bridges that go back to, back over a decade, that have been identified as bridges in need of repair. So of course, roads and bridges, looking into drainage. There's a project going on in the Kaiser Valley area right now after the 2018 storm that we had. Some of that drainage has been diverted, and it's changing. And I know there's plans to look into the pump station down there with all the flooding issues in the Kaiser Valley area. Parks as well, you know, we have a park study that's appearing right now, and a lot of work is being done on those parks to make them look, to look in their best shape. And I mean, that helps people. We have a, right now with the real estate market in the city, we have a lot of people coming into the city in those parks and things like that are going to be what people see on the surface there that make them want to live and stay in a community. And then looking at our historical buildings, where City Hall is one of them. So that's a piece that we can also look at when it comes to improving the infrastructure and the looks of our city.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Bill answering. Before the pandemic hit, the city was expected to exit Act 47 Financial Distress Status last summer, in July of 2020. The state legislature and Governor Wolf approved a law in May of 2020 that extended by 18 months the timelines for municipalities to exit Act 47 Oversight. City Council here in Scranton then adopted an ordinance amending the exit plan to include the 18-month extension. Are you confident that the city will exit Act 47 Financial Distress Status in 2022? And please explain your, your position.
I had the opportunity to take a look at the exit plan. I love to sit here and say that I'm absolutely confident that that's going to happen. But when I looked at some of the projections, it's still projecting out some deficits, a couple million dollars each year for the next couple of years. That greatly concerns me, because the only way to make up those types of deficits is to raise taxes on an already highly burdened tax base here in Scranton. Between school district taxes, we know that under their distress status, they're going to have to raise taxes pretty much to the cap for the next five years. So you take those taxes, combine them with having increased city taxes to balance our budgets. That, that's going to put a tremendous burden on an already stressed city tax base. It's, as a superintendent of a large urban school district in Scranton, one of the things that all the superintendents from Harrisburg to York to Pittsburgh and Johnstown, we always said, you know, it's great to be in charge of a city school district, but one of the challenges that we always had was an eroding tax base. Because what's in the cities, you have all the nonprofits, we have five colleges, we have all the churches, we have federal buildings, state buildings, city buildings, school district buildings. None of them are on the tax rolls. So every piece of property that's not on a tax roll has a negative impact on our city. So yet, we still realize that that brings quality to our city at the same time. So it's a difficult challenge, but I'd love to see us remove that distress status, because I want people to come to our city, to move to our city. And I've seen that with the Steamtown Marathon, we bring runners from 45 states and seven different countries every year, and they brag about what a great town the city of Scranton is. And they particularly brag about the people in this city. So I would love to see us remove that status as soon as possible. I'm not confident about January. Thank you.
Thank you. And Heather, the same question to you. Are you confident that the city will exit Act 47 Financial Distress Status in 2022? And please explain your position.
So coming from a position where I've not been participating so far in city government, I, you know, feel like I don't have the same, you know, inside information about, you know, the status of what our budget is right now. But I've been trying to keep informed and, you know, watching the town halls by Mayor Cagnetti and, you know, reading everything I can about it. I mean, I, you know, could echo Bill's sentiments, like I Um, you know, reading everything I can about it. I mean, I, you know, could echo Bill's sentiments like I, I am hopeful that that would be the case. But I know that we're coming from a position of very longstanding, um, you know, uh, financial hardship in the city. And, you know, face a lot of challenges with, with especially the school, um, recovery and everything. Um, I would hope that, uh, you know, the American Rescue Plan funds that we're receiving will help to mitigate some of that. I know that, you know, we don't yet know all the ins and outs of how that money can be spent. And I know it can't directly reduce the tax burden for our, you know, residents here. Um, but maybe with strategic planning, um, you know, some of those things that can indirectly reduce the tax burden. Um, you know, and, and also help to, to fund project, maybe funds can be shifted here and there. You know, I, uh, working for a couple of different nonprofits, you know, I'm, you know, where like what Bill said, this, you know, community is robust with nonprofit organizations, which do such great work. And it's an asset to have here, bring such quality. But I think also, you know, uh, looking at programs such as, you know, payment in lieu of taxes for some of the nonprofits or seeing how we can get them to more, um, heavily engaged in. Uh, financial aspects of the community is, is helpful. And then, you know, with the likelihood of CHS pulling out of here and those hospitals that they run. Um, you know, becoming nonprofits as well. I think that's something that really needs to look at and something that's worked successfully in other communities is, you know, even particularly with CHS and other communities. But, but other, um, for-profit hospital entities that became nonprofit as well. So something that I think could help, you know, offset some of that, um, you know, debt that we have.
Thank you. Tom, the same question to you. Um, are you confident that the city will exit Act 47 financial distress status in 2022? And please explain your position.
So I think, um, I, I, I think in the coming months, we're going to have a better picture of where we are, where we are financially with the exit of, um, Act 47. Um, the reason, uh, and I'm sure Kyle will hit on it, um, we had an 18 month extension to, to take a look at the payable prep tax, which there really hasn't been too much discussion of it. At this, since, since this, um. Extension has been done, but, um. Uh, I, I think at that point in time, we'll have a better picture of, of where we're at. I think we'll have a better picture of where we could use federal funds. Um, I know, uh, there has been talk about using some of these federal funds for revenue loss over the, um, during the pandemic. And, um. My, the one thing that I do look at are those projections for the next couple of years where we're showing budget shortfalls. And I think council this year, I, I think it shows how strong council was this year and that, you know, Pell, Pell is showing us those projections of these shortfalls. And they're calling it a creeping structural deficit. Um, our, our expenditures increased by 3% per year, our revenues by 1%. And that's something that can't be sustained. And what council did this year was they, they cut down the, the budget from the administration to make sure if, what, what the administration was doing this year was adding another 1%. So it would be a 3% expenditure increase each year moving forward compared to that 1% revenue. Um, which again is, we're increasing that structural deficit. And council cut that down. So I do think. Coming soon, we'll have a better picture of how we can use those mon, those funds, where we're at financially and, uh, plan for that exit.
Thank you. And Kyle, the question to you. Are you confident the city will exit Act 47 financial distress status in 2022? And please explain your position.
So I will say that I am confident that we're going to exit act because we're going to be forced to exit Act 47 on January 27th. But, you know, I, it's still up in the air whether we can maintain, you know, balanced budgets moving forward. There's a couple of things we do need to get done this year before we exit Act 47. Uh, we need, we still need, and these are outlined in the exit plan. Uh, we still need to develop a debt policy. We still need a, a fund balance policy, um, on the books. And then Tom's right, we also, you know, have to discuss that BP Merck to payroll prep. This is the only window we have to do it. We ha, we have been working on trying to get the data together to get a better picture of how that will impact. Uh, you know, community, businesses as a whole, industries as a whole. Um, we're having a little trouble just getting that, you know, getting that data into one spreadsheet. Cause we're getting it from multiple different sources. But that, you know, that's, those are the three things that are going to have to be done, uh, this year. But in the exit plan, we have our budget shortfalls because we're still operating under a. Ancient taxing system within the state of Pennsylvania. The taxing system in the state of Pennsylvania was set up in the late 60s. When all the wealth was still concentrated in cities and outlying boroughs. Whereas today, it's more of those outside, uh, you know, farther out boroughs and, uh, townships where all the wealth is concentrated as they move out. Where we, where the city still has 40% nonprofits and those nonprofits don't serve just the city of Scranton, the residents of the city of Scranton. They serve the residents of the entire region. So I think one thing we need to do is, and I'm on the, the mayor's, uh, tax committee looking into, uh, taxes, you know, our tax structure going forward. Uh, BP, so a transfer from a payroll prep or to a payroll prep from a BP Merck is, uh, something we could do right now. But we also have to look at what we need to argue we should be able to do in the future.
Thank you, Kyle. And you, you kind of, um, thought through what my next question is. And so, um, the city's plan to exit Act 47 status does recommend that the city replace the business privilege and the mercantile taxes with a broader based payroll tax. And so my next question is, uh, do you support or oppose this tax swap, um, recommendation? Um, and, and explain again, explain your position. Um, and so this question will start with Heather.
Um, yes, I absolutely support that. I mean, I think it has created, you know, for a long time, an undue burden on would be business owners. And especially in light of the pandemic, like that's only gotten worse. So, you know, we've unfortunately seen business closures, you know, it's probably discouraged, um, people from opening up shop in Scranton and maybe doing it instead in other areas. Um, you know, in the region. So I think that we need to, you know, attract new businesses to the area and support, um, small business owners, particularly. You know, minority business owners and, and immigrant business owners and, um, you know, people who wouldn't otherwise, um, be able to, you know, participate in, um, you know. Uh, business, business, business ownership in the community. So I think that, you know, uh, replacing that tax would be, um, a great step in the right direction toward, towards supporting, supporting growth in, in the business, um, enterprise in Scranton.
Thank you, Heather. Um, the same question, uh, do you support or oppose the, the tax swap? So switching out the business privilege and mercantile taxes and bringing on a broader base payroll tax? And please explain your position.
Yes, I, I would support it. Um, it's been something we've been going over for quite some time. I think there is a, a timeframe in which we have to do it. I, there's definitely a timeframe within Act 47. Um, but, but yeah, we, the, the city does need to expand its, expand its tax base. And this is possibly a, an area where we could do that.
Thank you. Kyle, the question to you.
Yes, yes, I, I do support a, a transfer from a BP Merck to a payroll prep. And so one of the things that are, you know, going back to our, your previous question real quick of why our deficits are created is the lack of organic growth. In our tax revenue. And what I mean by that is. Tax revenue growth without raising tax rates. So over the past, you know, especially with property values, a lack of a reassessment. Our total property value number has gone down while our expenses have gone up. So that's one thing that the, the payroll prep should, uh, should bring to us is more of an organic growth. Because the revenue from that will grow as wages grow.
Thank you. And, and Bill, uh, the question to you in terms of the tax swap, what's your position? Bill, you're on mute. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that. Oh boy, you can't believe the speech you missed. Um, at any rate. I, I do support the payroll tax, uh, swap. Um, you know, one thing, and, and I, I completely agree with everything that Kyle had indicated. Um, and, you know, some of these regressive taxes really prevents people from wanting to create businesses in our city. And we need to promote business because when we promote small business in our city. Um, we're, we're not only increasing taxes and, and the payroll tax, uh, would, would grow as more employees are hired. But that, that's the other point. Um, we're going to, we're providing more opportunities for the citizens of our city to be able to work. And as, as Kyle said, um, it's more, uh, organic growth rather than having to go to the taxpayers all the time and, and put the tax burden on their back. So I, I think absolutely I'm in support of that, uh, switch to payroll tax.
Thank you. It's a staying on the, the budget, uh, situation for the city. Um, this also came up. So Lackawanna County government has not done a property reassessment since the 1960s. So the city of Scranton and the city of Scranton obviously uses the, the county's property assessments in its property tax formula. So do you support or oppose the call for Lackawanna County to conduct a property assessment, uh, reassessment? And please again, explain your position. Tom, to you first.
Yes, I support a reassessment. Um, this, uh, it seems like something that was, we were on the cusp of, and then it, um, it kind of fell by the wayside here recently. But, um, I, I do think it would be a, a fairer way to, to, uh, you know, get taxes out all across the board. Um, right now I, I moved from North Scranton over to Fawnwood Heights and, uh, I'll say the, the taxes here are one of the highest in the city. Um, uh, except, uh, I'd say maybe the trip park, the new trip park development. So when you take a look at taxes that are around $2,000 for one home and taxes that are approaching 10,000 for another, it's a, it's a big, it's a big difference. And I do think we need to have that reassessment to more accurately, um, account for that.
Thank you, Tom. Same question to you, Kyle.
Yes, I've actually been advocating for a reassessment for about six or seven years now, since it first came up, I believe. So the, the problem is, is we're not fairly being taxed. We're not being taxed on what our properties are currently worth. We're being taxed off a ratio of, you know, that, that's used to develop current work off of what your house was worth in 1967. Um, so yes, um, and that is working its way through the courts. Um, the Community Justice Project filed suit against Lackawanna County. I believe it was two years ago, um, in order to force a reassessment. And that is the same nonprofit group that was successful in, uh, suing Allegheny County. And that forced Pittsburgh and Allegheny County into doing a reassessment not too long ago. Um, but yeah, it, it, it's all about, it's all about fairness. And for too long, there's been too many scare tactics of, you know, you know, the old lady down the, down the street or the old, you know, the old man down the street. Their taxes are going to go up if we have a reassessment. So that's why, you know, there's been too much of those fear tactics going on and we just have to be honest with people about it.
Thank you, Kyle. Bill, the same question to you. Do you support or oppose the call for Lackawanna County to conduct a reassessment of property values?
Absolutely. Um, I'm 58 years old and I don't think, I think the last time a reassessment was done, I might, I might've been five or six or seven years old at the time. You know, there's so many inequities, uh, you know, I was encouraged by some people, you know, to get down and challenge my taxes because of, a few years ago. And, um, it, it turns out if you, you can go to the, the tax office, you can go online and check the assessments of the properties in your neighborhoods. And, you know, I, I found out that I was $4,000 above everybody in my neighborhood. Um, and I let that go for probably 16 years, 17 years. So, um, that kind of really brightened my eyes to this, to this situation. And, and I realized that, you know, this is important that, because everybody needs to pay the, pay their fair share. And at the end of the day, you know, reassessment is really revenue neutral. It just, it's all about making sure that everyone is paying their fair share and they're assessed properly. And I don't see how anybody can be against that. And typically, you know, people that have those older homes, there's a good chance they're going to pay less, quite frankly. And everybody, you know, with the, the newer homes and the larger homes, you know, they're, they're the ones that are going to be assessed maybe a little bit higher and, and rightfully so. You have a newer home, you, it's, uh, it's worth a little bit more on the market. And, uh, hey, at the end of the day, everyone needs to pay their fair share. And I strongly believe that we need to do this reassessment. Um, maybe rolling over four or five years, but it absolutely needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Heather, the question to you about, um, supporting or opposing Lackawanna County doing a property reassessment.
So I have to be honest, I was like a taxpayer and a homeowner. At first, my knee jerk reaction was like, oh God, no, because, um, you know, I, I feel like I pay more in taxes already on my property than I have in any other place I've ever lived, including the other city I live in in Pennsylvania. So, um, at first, before I educated myself about how long it had been and the disparities that exist in the community, you know, I, I was opposed. But definitely in full favor for all of the reasons that, um, the other candidates have spoken about, you know, a hundred percent in every way, I believe in equity, you know, among the community members. And, um, I, I did find out that my wife partner and next door neighbor pays an exorbitantly more, uh, you know, amount of taxes on her home, which is pretty comparable to mine. And I just don't understand how in the same community on the same street, like literally walk up the hill and I'm at her house. Um, you know, like Bill said, like thousands of dollars more. I couldn't even believe it when she told me so. Um, uh, you know, I, I fully support that. I think that, um, as quickly as we possibly can do it. I know that these things take time, but like the, the, um, risk of it being not done uniformly and, and being applied. Um, you know, differently to, you know, if we wait too long, you know, I think is there as well. So like as quickly as it can be rolled out and done in a reasonable fashion, I think that that's, um, you know, important. And, and like one of the other candidates said, you know, there's a chance that some of these people that are living in the older homes, um, you know, their assessment could go down in relation to, you know, what they're paying right now. So, you know, actually I think it would be a good move for, for even those, um, you know, with lower income levels and, and, for, and, or neighborhoods.
Thank you. And, and one final question dealing with, uh, city finances. So as was mentioned, that P E L is report, predicting creeping structural deficits, so not based on the health of the economy or a pandemic. But just the way budgeting is, is done in the city, uh, so moving forward. So what would you target on the re, on the, um, expenditure side? We've talked about the, the revenue side. So what would you target on the expenditure side to try to help bring the, the budgets in balance as we go forward? And so Kyle, this is to you first. What, what would you target on the expenditure side of the city budget?
So to be completely honest, there is not much we could target on the, on the, uh, expenditure side. Out of our 115 million dollars, you know, there might be, it's around five or six million that's left over when you go through. Uh, collective bargaining agreements, including, you know, pay scales, pension, uh, benefits all down the line there. And then, you know, just the bare minimum of, of what it takes to maintain all those departments and then also our debt service. So there really isn't a lot, which is why we're sort of in this. Position where we're not properly maintaining our roads, we're not properly maintaining our parks. And that's no one's fault right now. This goes back a decade to when the council defaulted on the parking authority. And the city finances just began to sort of roll downhill from there. But it's, it's, but it's hard to, you build that back up. And I think you build that back with, first we have, we, we need to, and this is something we're doing within the mayor's, uh, tax committee is trying to. Develop new ideas for things we could go and argue, we should have the ability to, uh, use to create more revenue. Examples being, uh, you know, some form of sales tax, um, some form of non-resident EIT. Um, which would, which I know a lot of people aren't, you know, don't think will ever happen. But that is the best way where we could capture those 40% nonprofits. And then we could also lower our resident EIT to attract more residents into the city. Um, but then we also have to look at, you know, taxes of the future is what I call them. Sort of is keep an eye on the evolving online gaming industry. Cause it's not like you have to go into a casino now to, so that revenue should be a local share. And then also, uh, you know, rec, but don't use recreational marijuana, it's coming. It's just a matter of when, since it's surrounding us now. So we should be able to get a local share from that as well.
Thank you, Kyle. The same question to you, Bill. Is there something on the expenditure side you would be able to target in terms of trying to balance the, the structural deficit of the city?
Well, um, you know, Tommy, Kyle and myself all have something very much in. Well, you know, Tommy, Kyle and myself all have something very much in common. I was the superintendent of the Scranton School District for six years. And Tommy got on the school board after I had left and Kyle was on there for years toward the end of my tenure. And, you know, one of the interesting parts about that is when school board members come on, they have all these grandiose ideas or thoughts about how, you know, they're going to trim this budget. Well, realistically, as Kyle had pointed out, when you look at all of your contractual obligations, as Kyle has said, with the health benefits and with the, you know, salaries, with several different unions, that really puts you into a position where in this case, probably like $5 million left. So, you know, obviously we want to look very closely at how that remaining $5 million is spent and try to make sure it's being spent wisely. Or see if it can be repositioned to benefit the city in better ways. But we do absolutely have to look for alternative ways of getting revenue into the city. And I'm really big on chasing state and federal grants. And I think that our city needs to be more aggressive with that. When I was at Lakeland, I worked with some state legislators and Senator Blake and Kyle Mullins and Bridget Kozarowski. And we were able to get a $200,000, $200,000 grant for one project and a $50,000 grant from another project. And, you know, things like that, collaboration, cooperation with our state and local legislators are ways to be able to generate more funding so that we don't have to use our existing budget on things for the city.
Thank you, Bill. Heather, the question to you, is there something you could pay attention to or target on the expenditure side of the city budget to try to help put it in balance?
Um, you know, I agree and appreciate with, you know, what Kyle said from, from the knowledge that I've been able to gain about the city budget. It did not seem like there were, you know, a lot of excessive, you know, frivolous spending going on. I think, you know, that we've been coming from a place of financial hardship for so long that, you know, we're really just kind of getting to where we're not completely in the red. And, and that's without, you know, the challenges that we face like upcoming. So like everyone else has said so far, I think that the focus needs to be not on cuts, but more on growth. And, you know, innovative ways to attract, you know, new revenue into the city. And, you know, having more of a surplus that way rather than cutting services or things that might be, you know, in the budget for spending right now. You know, when we have this, you know, taxes second highest only to Philadelphia, like people, people want to know that they're getting something for the taxes that they're paying. And like cutting to the budget to bear bones for services that people need in the city, I think is not the answer. So I think that the focus needs to be more on growth than, you know, on decreasing. Sometimes you have to make money.
Thanks, Heather. And Tom, the question to you, is there something that can be done on the expenditure side of the city budget to help balance the city budget?
So as was said, out of a $115 million budget, there's only about $5 million that you have any leeway with. I think, you know, some of the good ideas that are out there are using those grants to, those grants. And then some of that federal money coming into maybe offset other funds. You know, looking at those future possible ways of revenue generation, those future taxes, as Kyle put it, payroll prep. And one thing I think we need to do is we definitely need to keep in mind the recovery plan with the Scranton School District. Taxes are going up over the next four years of that five year plan. I think the city needs to keep that in mind for our citizens to not make that tax burden grow anymore with that. But I'm looking into the shared services committee. We've, the pandemic has now put that on hold again. But that committee got together and there's ways that the district and the county and the city can save money when it comes to, you know, purchasing power, things like that. And there's definitely areas where we, we share and they overlap and that could be done. So I think with something like that, it's making what we have efficient, making the most efficient use of taxpayer funds with it. And chipping away at that, not reinventing the wheel, the things that are working in this city. We should continue to, to move forward with and let them work in the areas where we need improvement, make those improvements.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. So the next question deals with the Scranton Police Department. What are the strengths and what are the weaknesses of the Scranton Police Department's relations with various ethnic communities and communities of color within the city? So what are the strengths and weaknesses as you perceive them? And we'll start with Bill.
Okay. I've had a really close working relationship with the Scranton City Police, especially through the S R O program. The School Resource Officer Program in the Scranton School District, which started, you know, pretty much right after Columbine in 99. And I've got to see firsthand some really outstanding professional police officers in the city of Scranton. I've also had the opportunity to work with our city police through the Steamtown Marathon over 25 years, where the, the city police worked with us for the finish line and as the runners would enter the city of Scranton. I've only been in a situation where I've seen our Scranton Police Department deal with people in a professional, professional way. You know, that having been said, you know, our city is changing, our demographics are changing. And I think, I think that that's a good thing. And I think, I believe right now that our city police are going through some sensitivity training and things like that. And I think it's important that they learn, you know, about the different ethnicities and the backgrounds of some of the people that are coming to our city. And I, I think that we can't stay stagnant. There's always more to learn on policing and education and policing. But my experience in working with the Scranton Police Department, and there's about four or five of them that all live in my neighborhood. And I've only had a good experience, but that's me. I'm a white male. So it's important that our police department really has a full understanding and continues to do some training so that they know how to deal with people of all colors, religions and races. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The question to you, Heather. Strengths and weaknesses of the Scranton Police Department's relations with the various ethnic communities and communities of color in the city?
But like Bill said, I'm coming from the perspective of a white female, you know, in a privileged, you know, role in the community. And, you know, so I think I can't speak directly to police services because I've never had to use them. I have though, however, spent, you know, time talking to minority group members, you know, the founders of the Black Scranton Project. And I know that there are some serious concerns there with feeling like their voices were not heard. And I think that, you know, for, for you and I, or, you know, all of us here being non-people of color, to make a judgment on how they're doing with, with relations in the minority communities like a disservice because, you know, we cannot possibly know. So I think that having them at the table is super important. You know, listening to, you know, their lived experiences, you know, just because it hasn't happened to us doesn't mean it hasn't happened to anyone. So I also live in a community with police officers. They're, they're good men and women. And, you know, definitely don't have anything against the, the police department other than, you know, the, the, you know, issues that were in the media, you know, with the texting and all of that, you know, that's all I, I know directly other than stories from lived experiences. So, you know, I think that they're taking some good steps. I did just see in the news, you know, about the training that they're undergoing for bias. I definitely believe more of that needs to happen, you know, it needs to happen for us in healthcare as well. You know, because the disparities only grow if we don't address like our inherent, you know, racial inequity and our biases. So, you know, having more of that and then, you know, also I'm in support of some sort of a citizens review board, you know, for issues that may arise that includes members of community that, you know, these things are happening to, you know, not just you and I.
Thank you, Heather. Tom, the question to you with relation to the strengths and weaknesses of the Scranton Police Department's relations with different communities within the Scranton community?
So I'm going to say a strength of the Scranton Police Department was being proactive. You know, when, when this, when the national movement came along here of police reform and the Scranton Police Department was looked at, the Scranton, there were eight items. Then there was a, it was a, the eight can't wait initiative. And of these eight items, the Scranton Police Force was already using all eight for over a decade. And these reforms came into the Scranton Police Department through mental health, which is something that doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter your race, your color, your creed. Mental health is straight across the board. So all of these reforms came in probably over a decade ago with the mental health situation. De-escalation techniques, holds, warnings, exhausting all other alternatives, comprehensive reporting. These are things that the police department has been using, you know. And when we look at some, you know, events that occurred there, these are bad actors. And, you know, some of the actions that they have done, minus what we just spoke about, they've committed other bad acts. And they've been, those actions have been taken care of. But I would say the police department, I was surprised to see that they were very proactive. And all of the reforms that have been spoken about recently have been put into place and have been there for a decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Kyle, what are the strengths and weaknesses of the Scranton Police Department's relations with various ethnic communities and communities of color within the, within the city?
I agree. So I agree. It's just a little hard to sit from a position of, you know, as a white male, position of privilege and, and say how those relations are. But I do agree with Tom that one of the strengths of the Scranton Police Department as a whole has been being proactive in terms of training, in terms of, you know, in terms of body camera usage, in terms of their, their laser guns, the stun guns. But that's all a credit to, I think, former Chief Graziano and also to our, you know, the police department's grant writer, Maggie Perry. They did a wonderful job in terms of upgrading the whole police department in terms of technology. They were light years ahead of the rest of the city overall. But in terms of what the city can do moving forward to improve those relations. I, I mean, I'm a big proponent of community policing and we need to find the resources to be able to put police officers in every community so that the people of every community in the city get to know their police officers, get to look up to their police officers. Cause the majority of them are great people. They're just, they want to do the right thing. You know, every once in a while you get a few bad apples, but that's in any organization, you know, over, you can't pick too many organizations over 100 people that don't have a couple of bad apples here and there. So, but it's, but it's developing policies to rid those bad apples. But then again, not only community policing, but I also think we have to look into some form of police apothecally. I don't think there's any better way of bringing people together than sports. I mean, sports bring people together all the time. So I think that's one thing that we could look into moving forward.
Thank you, Kyle. Staying on the diversity and equity concern, how can city council promote, support and assure diversity, equity and inclusion within the city's staff and within the city itself? And Heather, this question goes to you first.
So I feel really strongly, you know, about having a fully funded human relations commission that does exist, but I think it needs to be promoted more. And, you know, we need to, of course, decrease any instances of discrimination based on, you know, being in a minority group of any kind. And, you know, that includes housing, healthcare, you know, access to services, you know. Spoken with community organizations, you know, that are run by minority leaders and that are fairly innovative ideas. And also gave a lot of feedback that, you know, it's, it's very hard for somebody who's not been in the business realm or the nonprofit realm for a long time to navigate opening nonprofits or, you know, doing more outreach in the community that they would love to do. Like Glenna Johns from the Black Scranton Project, you know, shared with me how difficult she found like all the, all the grant writing and everything. Like, you know, people, she said, you know, the same people seem to get the money over and over again because they're a pro at it. You know, it's just sort of like refilling out the forms that they've already done. But there's really no process for, for training people on how to be involved. So I think that, you know, it's important again, that their voices can be heard in that way too. You know, they're planning this community center, which is going to be an amazing asset to the community. You know, so I think, I think we need to encourage community partnerships with programs like that and innovators and visionaries, you know, that are, that are looking to improve that. And I think that we can also invest in the celebrations of our history in this community, you know, with the Black Scranton Project, the Anthracite Heritage, you know, museum, the Lackawanna Historical Society and, and engage in, you know, in that in any way that we can help. Because this, you know, community has a lot of diversity and a lot of like very cool history and landmarks and things like that. But I, I think that those need to be amplified and celebrated to help promote like, you know, diversity and inclusion.
Thank you, Heather. Tom, the same question to you. How can city council help to promote, support and assure diversity, equity and inclusion within the city's staff as well as within the city itself?
I mean, I think it's something that we just live in our everyday lives, you know, the way we come up and we, the way we project ourselves helps with that. I think diversity is, is, you know, being promoted in the city right now, and I think it's going to be, continue to be promoted into the future. I think looking at, you know, policies on discrimination are there so that doesn't occur. But I think that the strength of the city of Scranton is we've always been accepting of people. One thing that I've been saying recently when it came to a lot of women getting involved in politics is going back to 1917, there was women elected to the Scranton School Board. So there's been women involved in politics and they're, although more diversity is coming into the city. I think as more diversity is coming in, they're taking part in getting involved in their communities and the city is accepting. So I think it's coming along as it's coming along.
Thank you, Tom. Kyle, the question to you. How can city council promote, support and assure diversity, inclusion and equity within the city's staff and within the city itself?
So I, so first I think it's recruitment, number one. We got to go out and recruit, you know, a diverse workforce. But I also, you know, think it's more of a long-term problem and it goes back maybe 20 years of getting away from teaching civics in high school. A lot of these jobs don't pay good, but, you know, but they're, they're a public service and they're fulfilling to some people. The, the one city employee that really does pop off my head when I talk about this is the city planner, Don King. He could be making four times what he's making as a city employee somewhere else with the certifications he has. But he doesn't because he enjoys doing it and he enjoys doing the work. And I think it's, it's that lack of civics across all races that is not allowing people to get involved in local government and want to do, you know, those jobs that are a public service, even though they might not get paid as much as they might get paid in the private sector.
Thank you, Kyle. Bill, the question to you with regard to city council promoting and supporting diversity, inclusion and equity in the city's staff as well as the city itself?
You know, I'm a longtime educator and obviously worked 28 years in the Scranton School District. And if you go onto Scranton High School now, you'll see 20, I think it's actually 34 flags representing the countries of students who live in this city, attend our schools and are in our classrooms and are citizens of this community. And it amazes me that at Scranton High School, for instance, that all these kids come together and they're, you know, they embrace each other, they're friends, they're on the soccer team together, my kids with the track team and golf team. I think that education is key there, but also providing opportunities and trying to make kids, younger kids in our community from diversity to realize that they can come back and serve their community. You can go off and be a teacher, you can come back and work for the city as a city planner, as an city engineer, or maybe not just a clerk or maybe working in the Department of Public Works or working in the police department. So I think education is key and also making people feel more welcome in the city and offering possible internships to minority groups and reaching out to minority groups and recruitment, as Kyle had said. But I love the way that our city has become so diverse. You look through, throughout the communities and all you have to do is look at some of the restaurants and, and some of the local grocery stores that have popped up around the city. And I think that we just need to make sure that we open the doors to all candidates and make them feel welcome.
Thank you. Earlier, one of, I think it was Bill who's mentioned that we have five colleges located here in Scranton. So Scranton has five colleges, either totally or partially within its borders. According to the Institute of Public Policy and Equity. According to the Institute of Public Policy and Economic Development, a report a couple years back, about 27% of college students in northeastern Pennsylvania plan to stay in northeastern Pennsylvania and seek work after completing their degrees. So what can you do as a member of city council to encourage more of the graduates from our local colleges to remain in the area once they get their degrees? And we'll start with Tom.
So you cut out slightly there, can you repeat the, you said, just repeat probably the last, the last sentence?
Okay, so, so a, a report suggests that only about a third of the students who go to college in northeast Pennsylvania are gonna stay in northeast Pennsylvania, the rest go elsewhere. So the question is, what can you do as a member of city council to encourage more graduates who are in northeast Pennsylvania getting their degrees to remain here in northeast Pennsylvania and stay part of our communities?
I, I think the opportunities for employment is the, the big thing. I went to this college down in State College, Pennsylvania, and it was a rural area that was, was very nice and I, you know, I could, I could see myself living there just because of how nice it was, but there, there wasn't much, and it's starting to build up now. I, I think just the employment opportunities and bringing those in, bringing business in through possibly LERTAs and other economic development can, can bring that, that opportunity. And, you know, there's starting to be opportunities for small businesses in the area as well. So maybe collaborating with some of the different departments in the colleges that promote certain specific areas and, and maybe networking them through community members to, to gain employment or start businesses in the area.
Thank you, Tom. Kyle, the question to you, what can you do as a member of city council to encourage more graduates from our local colleges to remain in, in the city and in the area?
So, I, I agree with Tom, it is, it is, you know, job opportunities, but it's, but it's also being able to sell the affordability, I think, of this area, especially if you have people coming in from Philadelphia, New York, New Jersey. If you make $70,000 here, it goes a lot farther than making $70,000 there. You have the ability to buy a house, you know, you have the ability to have a car, you know, have a nice, a house in a nice neighborhood. So I, I think that's one, and it's all, but it's also, you know, the safety is, is making sure our, our streets are safe, making sure our streets are clean, making sure our parks are properly maintained, and just have that whole package. And I think if, you know, if the students there are looking at that whole package, I think it is a, an attractive one.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you, what can you do as a member of city council to encourage more local, more graduates from our local colleges to remain in the area?
I think it's, it's economic development and working in collaboration, cooperation with Chamber of Commerce. It was mentioned earlier, Tommy mentioned LERTAs. When, when I was at Lakeland, we, we approved a LERTA with the company, and you can negotiate those LERTAs, too, in terms of progression. It, that doesn't have to be, you know, 100% tax abatement for 10 years, it can start off as 95, and then the next year it jumps up to, or drops to 90, and gradually builds. But when you provide opportunities for businesses to move into the city, you're providing opportunities for our, our, our students to be able to stay and, and have jobs, family sustaining jobs. And that's important, and the tough part is, and I think Kyle mentioned it earlier, a lot of times these opportunities are presented up in, you know, the Abinghsons or in Scott Township or in, up in Jessup now. We need to do a little bit more of that to attract family sustaining jobs for our, our graduates, because, let's face it, we have, we've found that a lot of these kids go away and they do end up with really good jobs in Philly or New York or whatever, but then ultimately they want to come back here because it's a great place to live, a great place to raise a family, we have great parks and, and for all the reasons that Kyle had pointed out. And a lot of times they ultimately realize it's a rat race out there, I could live in Scranton with my family in this beautiful community, we just need to be able to try to provide opportunities for them. And I think economic development and collaborating with the chamber is probably the best avenue to getting there. Thanks.
Thank you. And Heather, the same question to you, what can you do as a member of city council to encourage more graduates from our local colleges to remain in the area?
You know, I echo the sentiments of everyone else, of course, that, you know, just overall, not just for younger graduates at the colleges, but we need to focus, you know, on economic development here and getting out of the financial distress that we're in, but, you know, doing the things like improvement of the infrastructure and, and reducing the inequity in the, the housing taxes and things like that to attract people to come here. I think, you know, taking advantage of community programs for first, first-time homebuyers and, like, promoting those to, you know, the students in the schools as they get, you know, higher up in, in their education and, and age and everything is important. But I think, you know, just encouraging civic engagement in any way that we can, you know, people that, you know, come here and are sort of commuter students and they, you know, don't really get involved or engage in their community aren't, is likely to stay. So when I lived in Williamsport, there was a, a young professionals group, you know, that was started, you know, by, by a community member, you know, we, it was people, you know, young professionals and students from, like, all different educational and, and career-oriented backgrounds, and we did various things, we visited businesses that told us about, like, what they do there, and they would host and have, you know, drinks and orders and things like that. We had a leadership program with the Chamber of Commerce Leadership, Like-Homing, it was called. So people would be able to engage in that. So I think, you know, maybe having a committee of people that were interested in promotion of things like that within the city council, other community members that maybe go out and give talks to the, to the schools and, you know, encourage that, encouraging registering to vote in our own community versus, like, absentee voting where they don't even live. You know, I think, you know, attracting businesses that appeal to a more youthful market and, like, a more urban development, you know, sort of a feel, increasing the walkability, you know, maintaining our parks, I think all of those are important things. I've loved the recent surveys, you know, on the city website about the parks and about the pools, you know, and I think they're maybe not publicized enough, because unless you know it's there, we don't know it's there. So I think, you know, increasing modern approaches to getting ideas from community members is, is key.
Thank you. And with that, I think we will turn to our closing statements from the candidates. And so prior to the start here, we did select randomly who would begin the closing statements, and Kyle Donahue will be the first. So each candidate will be given two minutes, the same time we've been using, to present their closing comments. And again, we'll start with Kyle.
Thank you, Jean, and thank you for moderating this forum today. My wife and I, we bought a house in the city of Scranton in 2015 because we love this city and because we believe in its potential. In 2017, I ran for council because I was sick and tired of the city government that was rife with backroom deals, political favors, a lack of transparency. That, quite frankly, led to an inefficient stagnant government. I was extremely frustrated as I watched our neighborhood slowly deteriorate, but most of all, I ran for council because I believed with all my heart that the residents of this city deserve better from their government. In the last three years, the city has faced significant challenges. Immediately upon taking office in 2018, I began to question the operation of the court raid administration, especially on quality of life issues. I led the charge to establish a shared services committee between the city and school district to explore opportunities to jointly cut costs and create more, or create more efficiencies, and that's, that committee's still active to this day. I worked with Councilman Gawn on legislation that passed council unanimously that revived a dormant city ethics board. It has the, it has the authority to investigate any claims of unethical behavior or misconduct. And the legislation also updated the city, city's ethics policy that established limits on political contributions and end of play practices of the past, and this was done before any of the federal indictments. Then we had federal indictments, mayor resignations, but I was able to work with my colleagues to weather those various storms and right the ship in a direction where trust could begin to be restored in city government. But I still think there's still more, more work to be done, and that's why I'm running for reelection. So we need, we really need to continue to modernize city government, we must renew our focus on cleaning up our neighborhoods, we must properly maintain our parks and infrastructure, and we must modernize our tax structure moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle Donahue. Our next closing statement will come from Bill King.
Jean, thank you, and the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity today. This is my first foray into politics. I, you know, born and raised in the city of Scranton, I'm number seven of eight children who, you know, went through the Scranton City Schools, and I absolutely love this city. When my wife and I got married back in 90, 1997, we, I told her we were both working for the school district, I said, listen, as long as we are working for the Scranton School District, we're gonna live in the city of Scranton. We started off with a small home on Crown Avenue, and then ultimately, once we decided to build, we, we found a lot, we were fortunate to find a lot in the city, and we built up on East Mountain, which is where I, I grew up. And I've just been a big believer and promoter of the city of Scranton my entire life. I've been involved with the Lackawanna County, Lackawanna-Wayne County United Way Board. I served as the superintendent of the Scranton School District, and we built those three elementary schools and put five different roofs on back in 2011 to really try to maintain and create beautiful, clean buildings and schools for, for our children. As I said earlier, I serve on the Shamrock Heart Foundation to give back to our community and bring flowers to residents in the nursing homes and the hospitals in Scranton. Steamtown Marathon, 25 years, we're a completely volunteer organization that has had a huge economic impact in our city, and it brings people into our city and they get to see all the wonderful parts of our region. And I just want to be able to give back to the city that's been so good to me, and, you know, I feel like this is my time to be able to do that. And that's why I'm running for city council, I want to make a difference for our city and for the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill King. Our next closing statement is from Heather Mccone.
I may not be a Scranton native, I'm born and raised in Iowa, but I fell in love with Pennsylvania 10 years ago, well, going on 11 now. On my first visit, I actually did move back to Iowa a couple of years back, thinking, you know, I'd take a job closer to home, but ultimately, I, I missed the state, I missed everything, you know, here. And then, you know, came here for the opportunity to open, reopen childbirth services here in the Scranton community. You know, at the time, I could have chosen to live in Clark Summit or somewhere neighboring with, you know, a little bit, you know, prettier of a, a package, but I really believe strongly in, like, living in the community that I'm serving, and, you know, I think that this is a natural evolution for me to get involved more in city government and, you know, put, put the voices that I hear, you know, at work from, from my patients and their families to, to use in, in, you know, trying to improve the quality of life for everyone in our city. You know, so my, my whole life, I've been involved in some way in public service, both personally and professionally, and I don't ever intend that to stop, it's sort of just in my nature. Last but certainly not least, you know, I believe that a city's or anything's government should be reflective of its population and its members, and, you know, as we all know, there's only one female on city council despite the fact that, you know, we have a majority female in the city, or sadly, no people of color on the council or running. You know, love to encourage more of that, you know, civic engagement in the future, and I'm excited that that's not the case for school board at least, so that's improving. But, you know, even, even though they're not here, I would, you know, love to help to be the voice for everyone. You know, and I, I feel like, you know, that's, that's one of my strong suits is, is talking to people and hearing their concerns and, and doing what I can to, to help those concerns be rectified. So that's why I'm excited to run for city council, I appreciate the opportunity that the League of Women Voters has given us to, to have this talk today despite challenges of the pandemic, and it's been great, thank you.
Thank you, Heather Mccone. And Tom Schuster, your closing statement.
So, thank you for the League of Women Voters for having this forum today. It's great that even during a pandemic, we could all get some ideas out there and talk to the citizens of the city. So I, I am a lifelong resident of the city of Scranton, I've lived here for several generations of my family. I grew up in my great-grandparents' homestead in Tripp Park, in the Tripp Park area of Scranton, and went to college out of the city, and for all the reasons we discussed earlier on here, I moved back. I built, I had an ideal life in, in my neighborhood, and, I mean, through public service, I want to give that life to, to my child and to other children of the city. I think my experience on the planning commission on the Scranton School Board and on the council for the last year, prepare me for this job, I think I hit the ground running when I came onto council. And I feel, I've had a consistent track record and a voting history that you could look up. I've always been pushing for efficient use of taxpayer funds, I've always questioned and vetted decisions that were made to make sure that we covered all blind spots to try to make sure we didn't see any, any issues with them into the future. I've called out mismanagement in the, in the Scranton School District, and, you know, as Kyle has on his record with the city, there's also some investigations into the school district that are ongoing, and I hope to see some of that come out in the near future. So I was a part of bringing some of that to the, to the surface in the school district. And I've always had the professional courage to, to maybe even vote against something if, if the rest of the board or the rest of the council was going a, a different way, whether I felt it was, I, I had to vote with my heart. So I've been a candidate that's kept his campaign promises in the past, and I continue to do that into the future, and I humbly ask for your support on May 18th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. And so on behalf of the League of Women Voters, the University of Scranton's Political Science Department, and the newly opening University Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service, I'd like to thank the candidates for joining us today, and thank those of you who are watching this for taking the time to learn about the candidates who are running for Scranton City Council. I do want to remind you that you have, you can register to vote, the last day is May 3rd, and the primary is May 18th, because there are ballot questions, so policy proposals and proposals to the Pennsylvania Constitution to amend, all registered voters can participate in the primaries, primary. So Democrats, Republicans, and anybody else in terms of other political party registered voters. So please, remember, you can still register again until May 3rd, and we encourage everybody to go out and vote on May 18th in the primary. Thank you very much for joining us.